So, I don't do well unless I have something to start from. So, I threw something on paper so we had something to start from. I don't think I'm committed to any word on that paper. But I was thinking, you know, we're not at 100% occupancy, so limiting the number of rentals is not going to start the tourism rate. But the short-term rentals are hurting the long-term housing. And it's nationwide, it's actually worldwide. And there's this huge business now of talking people into renting their house long-term. And then you turn them into Airbnb. And it's such a big thing, they actually have the Facebook ads, I get them all the time. Get this seminar and then you pay for their package and learn how to do it. And so, we're going to see an increase in legal and illegal short-term rentals because everybody thinks it's the next good rich quick to be. So, I'm thinking we need to do something. And I'm thinking of several phases. First phase would be this part, which is the zoning part. And then the second part would be collaborating with the community about maybe some standards. Well, that's a little harder, so I didn't want to try to bite that in the same time.
Is that it?
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, just because I thought that the question would come up, I put it on in front of you, a little printout I did, of just some quick stats on our current registered vacation rentals. And when I say registered, those are the ones that we are aware of, that collect the collective remit tax and that we know of them. So, right now, we have 27 registered vacation rental units within the city limits. 11 are privately managed, meaning either the owner or a friend of theirs manages it for them. And then 16 are managed by companies. There's two local ones. And then, I don't have any stats yet on Airbnb. I actually have a letter I'm going to be sending out to all the property owners because there's a lot of confusion on what Airbnb collects and what they don't collect. And it's confusing for the owners. And obviously, they don't contact us. And so, it's been a little bit frustrating. But one of the national companies that actually is fairly good, the CASA, I don't have any problem with their rentals. They report on time, they contact me. I actually get to talk to a live person. Priceline, HomeAway, all of those, I get sent into email help. 17 are in commercial zones that don't require conditional use permits, meaning, you know, rental uses and allowed use in that zone. It just happens to be that there's a single-family dwelling or some other kind of unit that's in a commercial zone. Most of those are down in Sebastian Shores. Almost all the Sebastian Shores units are vacation rentals. There are some long-term rentals, but most of the folks are absentee landowners and they have them in a rental pool. 10 are in residential zones scattered throughout the city, from Harborview all the way out to Matier Road. And lots of different sizes and types and varieties. They're not all just your basic single-family dwelling. There are some like apartment units, there are large houses, different kinds. In 2018 and then to date for this year, so in the last 18 months, we have processed a total of nine vacation rental permits, which that is, that's huge. I mean, we went for years of not having any vacation rental permits and not having any conditional use permits. And then in the last 18 months, we processed nine of them. So, it is, as Counselor Kaufman said, it is kind of exploding. Of those, three are currently operating. Five have not begun operation because their permits were just recently approved. And then one was approved last year, but then decided to turn it into a long-term rental. And that happens sometimes, like they'll get a vacation rental permit and then decide that they're going to rent it full-time. That happens a lot. And then we, about once a quarter, we troll the vacation rental sites to see if we can see any that are not permitted. And we contact the owners and bring them into compliance.
Yes, sir.
So, in the beginning, it says 27 registered vacation rental units and then worse than nine vacation rental permits.
The, um, that has to do, those are conditional use permits that we processed this year.
Okay.
So, that may, that number is reflected in the 27, but not necessarily all of them are operating at this time.
So, I know the news.
Nine new ones in the last 18 months, yes. And some of them, over the last year, some prior conditional use permits, once they've been processed earlier, have either dropped off or turned into other things. So, that number is not static, it changes a lot.
Okay.
But that's the most vacation rental permits we have ever processed, especially in that short amount of time. I mean, we used to go years of not process any. And in the last year and a half, nine, that's a lot.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Counselor Kaufman, the two of you actually, the, um, when you say to limit the amount of permits to maximum of 10, is that new or is that total?
I was thinking 10 total. We have 10 now, so that would mean there wouldn't be any new ones in the residential zones. Now, like the
Oh, I see.
Like the river drive, condo townhouses and the ones down the street, those are commercial zones, so they don't need it. Sebastian Shores doesn't need one.
So, you're talking 10 residential?
So, I'm talking just in the residential zones.
Okay, and the other part of the question was, the dwellings over 3,500 square feet would not count towards maximum number, is it? Why is that?
I'm flexible with that number, but I'm thinking that the larger homes are not going to be rented to workforce housing.
They might do.
They could. But at some point, they're going to be too large and too expensive. So, whether that's 3,500 or 4,500 square feet or where that is, once it gets to $3,000, $4,000 a month, there really isn't anybody here that can afford that.
Not just special people.
Yeah, it's possible.
Just my suggestion would be not to, not to have that at all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, are we looking at 10 units for R1 and 10 for R2, 10 for R3? Or is that a combination?
It was all residential.
Okay.
And I don't, I didn't have, I thought about it and then I forgot, but I need to just get on my city managers' list serve and see if there's, how other cities are, do they have like a cap on how many they have? Are they noticing that certain areas? The coastal communities, it's, were impacted more so than the inland ones because obviously, people would be on the beach.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure, I wasn't able to find, and I just did a quick search. It wasn't like I spent a lot of time on it, to see if there was like some magic formula, like if you have this much population, you should not have more than this many vacation rentals. I didn't really find anything like that. And I don't, you know, I won't know if that exists, but I was going to try to compare other coastal communities to see how their stats are.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe there was something in our recent housing study related to rental properties and what the curve on when you would have to make. I remember that. And I could be wrong, but I would say look in our housing study because I
I think we had touched on it and we were talking about like what is the threshold. So, I mean, yeah, I need to go back and look at that, yeah.
I think I quantified that.
Yeah, I think Counselor Brennan had a question.
Counselor who?
Madison.
Oh, Counselor Madison, yes, ma'am.
So, I found that Lincoln City's got the same issue. They've been dealing with this since March of this year. Newport, Cannon Beach, and Huron River. And they're all trying to disseminate just how to curb this. But everybody's perspective is a little different. Kind of like what we found with the site ordinance.
So, pretty much, it's all arbitrary, right?
Well, I think each community has different issues. Like, for us on the South Coast, it's, we're more economically depressed than the Central and North Coast. I think Cannon Beach, they have a lot more affluent absentee landowners. So, each community kind of has their, it affects everybody, but each person kind of has their, each community has their whatever niche, sticking point on whatever it is. So, we just need to figure out what that is for us.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the volume can be monitored based on the occupancy rate. So, when we get months and months of 100%, 90% occupancy, we know that we need more. But we're not there. Even in July and August are our two biggest months. And so, when May gets up into the 70s, I think we need to have another discussion. But until then, the hotels need the money, the current vacation rentals need the money, and we need the housing. So, I think it's a win-win. It's so weird for me because when I was, what, 95, I wrote a letter against the any concept of regular vacation rentals. And here I am now promoting it. So, I understand.
Counselor Brennan, somewhere in here, I can't find it again now, there was a restriction on how many days per year any unit could be, could be rented in that pool. One said it was 30 days, so.
Yeah, I think New Orleans had, if it was in the French Quarter, it had to be a 60-day rental, otherwise it had to be at least a 30-day rental.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, if we're, one, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, compare the hotel rates of occupancy now versus five, 10 years ago, to see if this is actually affecting the hotels. I bet it is.
Well, and that's why, I think, I think it was last year or the year before, I started breaking out the RV park occupancy versus the vacation rental occupancy versus the motel, because it used to just all be together in one, to see if there was any trends. And then I also have occupancy, I can't share that publicly, but I also have occupancy stats on each particular one. And there are some that, you know, in my opinion, the people would probably be better off renting it month-to-month. I think it was one of, like you were saying, to get rich quick, where it's like, yeah, but I can see your occupancy and you're really not getting that much money. It might be worth your while to just have it rented out monthly. But I think they were hoping like, you know, they're going to make like $10,000 a month virtually. So, maybe at some point, staff will have to kind of do that analysis and see where some of the lesser occupied ones, maybe it would be better to approach them and say, it might be in your best interest to just rent this. Anyway.
Counselor Madison.
Are vacation home owners required to make a name or acquire a business license through the city?
Yeah, yeah. For the, anybody that has a rental, whether it's month-to-month or vacation rental, they have to have, it's, we call it a business license, but basically, it's a rental license. In fact, on the chart, next time, I'm going to change it to just be a rental license, but it's the same fee as a business license. And then if they're vacation rentals on top of that, then they also have to collect remit tax. So, if you're a month-to-month renter, you just have to have the yearly business license.
Counselor Campbell.
I wanted to thank Ms. Kaufman for taking the time to gather all this information up and writing out a proposal for us to ponder.
So, what are we expected to do with this right now?
Is there anything you want to change before we move forward into the ordinance slate? Counselor Brennan, you didn't have the exclusion of the 3,500 per feet.
I mean, I take the idea of limiting the number of units, it's good, I don't mind. Do we want to just apply that to residential zones? Or what's the zone where's?
Sebastian.
Sebastian Shores.
That's a commercial zone.
Commercial.
Curbed, weatherway.
But those are potential rental units too, right?
Correct.
And they're funny, I'm building them all out now. I can involve one lot sold.
I've had a couple of people come in and talk to me this year about it, which that would be nice. I would say, and I'm, you know, we're just starting to forget the wall here, but I would say that the ones that are in the commercial zones typically are located closer to the ocean. I will say that the occupancy level for the Sebastian Shores ones is on par with hotels, just because of where it's located, it's closer to the beach. As you get further away from the ocean, the occupancy rates are not as high. So, maybe in those, I don't want to say less desirable because it's not that, but the non-oceanfront ones, I think those are the ones where we want to limit how many vacation rentals there are because potentially, I don't think they're going to make the money they think they're going to make. And it does take it out of the local rental pool. So, but.
And as, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And as Ms. Kaufman mentioned, our occupancy rate is low enough that that's not going to negatively impact. So, I think it's great.
What is it percentage, Counselor?
For, in the, in the, um, the monthly report that I give you.
We left our magnifying glasses at home, we can't read that.
Okay. On page nine of the CA report, I try to give you this. This is through May, so this does not
This is May, thank you.
So, for May, the motel occupancy rate was 47%. The vacation rental occupancy rate was 19%.
19?
Yeah. And then the, but even in the really busy months, well, July and August and September are the busy months. In July, the vacation rental rates are 71%. They're almost up there with the motel. And then the RV parks is also at 19%. June, July, and August are the big months of the year. And then it drops off significantly.
Yeah. I was thinking that, and I've been hearing more and more about the camping areas and what have you, becoming more and more popular and people like and better, you know, like the people from the wind surfing competition and what have you like that. And I don't know if we're missing a boat on something, you know. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking on top, like, and usually when I do that, I get confused. So, I'm going to.
And keep in mind, this is just within the city limits, okay? This doesn't include the RV parks at the river, this doesn't include
But I was thinking of one specifically that we have here.
Um, RV parks?
Well, you know, well, not, well, I'm assuming Turtle Rock is one.
Yeah, we have Turtle Rock, Oceanside, which is down by the port, Ireland's RV Park, and then now Rogue River Landing.
That's right.
So, we have four within the city.
And Rogue River.
And Rogue River.
That's what I mean.
And what about First Street?
That one, they are all long-term rentals. They don't, they don't really do transitory.
Indian Creek.
Indian Creek is not in the city limits.
We have 10.
They did a cherry-steminate annexation back in the early 2000s.
Yes.
All right, so, yes, Counselor Madison.
Go ahead.
So, as industry pushes its way south along the Icat Corridor, I feel like the more investors and manufacturers we have establishing their industry along the corridor, the more they will look to the coast to purchase vacation rentals. And I think that will eventually pose a bigger challenge.
That's possible. Yeah, Counselor Brown.
I'd be in favor of using this Counselor Kaufman's draft to start creating ordinance. There's a big, start a thing.
Okay, and do you want me to, because I was going to send this to Christie, do you want me to roll this into the room tax ordinance or into the land division code?
I think it's safer in the land division code, isn't it?
I don't know, that's, I can ask her which would be better to put it into.
Because we're tying it into the maximum condition use permits.
Okay.
And that might be the better way to word it. Instead of saying residential zones, saying that need condition use permits. And then if we were just, the commercial zone, where they need a permit for that, they can't see doing that, but maybe.
Okay. All right, well, I will send this on to, because this is a great first draft, but you know how the attorney is, they'll want to massage it.
Okay, I want to add something further, depending on what they do. Everybody in concurrence with this.
Okay. So, once the council does up a draft, we can massage the details from there?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll send this to our legal counsel to, because I'm sure there's some stuff in here where she's going to say, well, you have to do this, you can't do that. And.
You can put it in the penalty phase.
Yeah, I might be able to have something to you by August, when I'm thinking probably September. But I'll shoot for, I'll send this to her this week and shoot for trying to have it by August.
All right, let's see, unless there's anything else, any Counselor Campbell?
May I ask her please, when you do get the draft copy back from our attorney, will you shoot me and electric or us? I don't want to speak for y'all, but I want an electric copy of that so that I can shop it around to stakeholders and have them tell me what they like and don't like and want to change and all that stuff.
Okay.
May I make further? Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
And we have the, and I think we've already taken
Yeah, we already took.
So, what we're going to right now is the city minister's report.
And did you have anything that you wanted to add, take away, or whatever to the draft application?
I'm sure there will be changes once it gets in a draft form. I don't know.
No sign on this application.
Oh, my bad, I thought you were still on to talk to me.
No.
Sorry.
Say again, ma'am.
The, I, that's what we used for the road one tonight, the draft sign code application, did that look okay?
Yeah.
And certainly, we can, that's not adopted as part of the ordinance, so that can change on apply.
Yeah. I think we're okay there. Does anybody have anything to ask Counselor Madison?
Well, it sounded like there's a redundancy in the summer's opinion on page six. So, we might either need to reword that or combine the two?
And I think, all I did was take the ordinance language and make each one a topic, so I could combine them, put the two together.
If it's a liability, then yes, then we leave it. Otherwise, if there's any way we can combine it.
You say that one.
So, you took the ordinance and then made a box for each one and said, so if somebody looked at the ordinance and filled out the thing, they would know what they're doing.
Yep.
That's clever.
We do that for the vacation rental and for, there's one other application we use it for. It just makes it easier on the applicants than they don't, that's their fine use document. They don't have to reinvent the wheel, so anyway. Okay, so, quick updates. As I had told you guys earlier this month, there was some stuff going on and I apologize for not being available for part of the month of June. So, I don't, my report's not super long. Public Works, the crew is still working on a lot of new services, which is pretty exciting because this is the most new water and sewer services we've had in over a decade. So, it's pretty awesome. We have advertised for the vacant Public Works position. That was the one that was vacated by Justin Storms when he went to ODOT. And so, we had it advertised until the 5th. We got, I think, six applications. So, Will's on vacation this week, but when he gets back, he'll start reviewing those. Will and I got the full IFA loan application submitted the last week of June. That is for the, some of the priority projects that were outlined in the Wash Water Master Plan. And Counselor Campbell had asked me before the meeting, this includes the relocation of the main coming from Jerry's Flat, where it crosses underneath the highway by the port, because it's very deep there. It includes the work at the water intake and it includes all the work at the water treatment plant. And these were all the things that were, for those of you that weren't here before, the Water Master Plan had priority projects that were identified. And that was adopted in 2017, 2017 or 2018. So, anyway, so that got submitted that will go, because of the size of the projects, that has to go before their board in August. And we should hear something by the end of August, early September. We will also be requesting a portion of the funding from USDA on that as well. The total project cost for everything that we were proposing was 5.4 million. So, hopefully, we will get, we're asking for 4 million from IFA and we hope to get the remaining 1.4, I believe it is, from USDA. So, the police department, the stats are attached there. Fire department, we sent two volunteers, two volunteers to the CFPA Wildland Fire School last month, and that brings the total for our department to 10 that have gone. Most of our mutual aid calls are wildland-related. So, it's good to have them cross-trained in that. And then Chief Krieger also said that two members of his crew are working towards engine boss slash crew boss certification. That has to do with being able to use engines. And ultimately, he would like, his long-term plan is for the fire department to start making money for the city. So, in the summertime, because obviously, the fire seasons have become worse and harder. So, if we can make money for the city, for the fire department, that would be great. But that's kind of like a way long-term plan. Admin finance, still closing up the year, June 30 is the end of my year. The auditors will be here for the fieldwork for '17, for '18, '19, the third week of October. And my schedule's still a little bit wonky, but please, if you guys need to get in touch with me, you know, email, phone. I'm here every day, it's just not here all day, every day, but working all day. Visitor Center, Debbie's report is attached. One of the things that I put in front of you, just from years. The Ariel had mentioned this briefly, the Wild Rivers Coast Food Trail. This, the Oregon Coast Visitors Association put together this passport. If folks, if visitors visit the different locations on the Wild Rivers Food Trail, they can get a little stamp. And then if they fill their book up, they can bring it either to us at the visitor center or to Adventure Coast, which is in Coos Bay. And I can't remember what they get, but they can, they get something from the Oregon Coast Visitors Association for stamping the book. And for those of you that did not notice, our very own Counselor Brennan is in the collateral for the Wild Rivers Coast Food Trail because Arch Rock is one of the stops on that. So, Debbie wanted us to give you those. And I think those are pretty cool. We did not print these, these were from OCA, but we're distributing them. So, that's just kind of a fun thing that's going on. And I believe, oh, and Visitor Center sign is finally up, finally, finally, finally.
Saw that go up, that was pretty funny.
It was supposed to be up in December, and here it is. It was July 3rd, and it finally went up. So, I had actually, in my mind, had pictured only a one-dimensional rendering of the bridge, you know, just like the hint of the bridge. Well, the guy actually like built a three-dimensional bridge. And it was like, okay, now I know why it took him so long. But it does look very beautiful. So, the sign is down at Visitor Center now. The stats through May are attached. And then there's also, I get this thing from, and I'm sure Counselor Madison gets this too, the state sends me economic data, the Southwest Economic, Southwest Oregon Economic Indicators. And it's just like, Curry County, we're still below everybody. So, it's just, you know, it's just kind of depressing. But our unemployment But our, um, our employment is still five point nine. We're high, we're still the highest in the region and well below the state, I mean, well above the state. So, anyway. So that's what's happening where that city.
Can I ask you a good question, Ms. Administrator?
Yeah.
Um, did you say that we're going to fund all priority one water projects or you sought funding for all priority ones?
Not all of them, but, um, the, the higher priority ones, because the engineer listed what the priority projects were of like most critical to, to, like highest critical to lowest. And so we're going to be funding five point, we're going to be seeking funding for five point four million of the priority projects. And I believe there's a total of four that we're seeking the funding for right now. Let's talk after, because I've got tons of questions on that. Okay.
Thank you. Can I ask my question?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So I see under, um, the police report, then we have a reserve. On there and so did I miss where we were going to add that? I understood the last budget meeting we had, either we were going to replace who was leaving or after that not hire anybody. Is that the case or?
The reserve officer is a volunteer.
So is he in training in case we lose somebody maybe?
Um, no, um, it's a retired police officer and, um, a retired local police officer. And it's actually Derwin, Derwin Boggs.
It is?
Yeah.
Who is it?
Derwin Boggs.
Did not look like.
Log it up.
Great. Yep. Yeah, Derwin, um, he actually volunteers for the fire department and for the police department.
All right, anything further to ask at Administrator concerning the report? If not, let's get on to the counselor comments and, yes.
I just want to clarify, the council did decide to replace that position?
Yes, yes, it did. Uh, Counselor Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to report on?
Um, I did a lease water treatment facility tour last month and totally forgot to share it with you guys. And it was so awesome. I learned so much about the systems, quite intricate, a lot of, um, good effort. And systems are a place to keep us from, a lot of you haven't heard that, I would recommend you check it out. Mr. Newell was kind enough to give me several hours. It was really insightful.
Gives you a whole new appreciation for the restroom facility, doesn't it?
It does. And every time going down there, you know, it's interesting to learn that the water spikes at lunch hour and after five and how clean. I really was afraid to walk away from there smelling like leftovers. It smelled great. The place is so clean. They clearly take pride in that facility. That made me proud. Let's see. Um, housing task force, Georgia and Ellen and I were having a conversation. And we would like to have the housing needs assessment for Gold Beach presented at the next meeting. And I unfortunately will be out of town on training and so, um, Georgia maybe suggested that you might be interested in doing that to me.
Okay.
And then, and we're actually expanding the task force and your name was part of the candidates. Shocker. Um, so that, and then one last thing there. When perusing the Gold Beach website, there are links for other maybe nonprofits, but I don't find a link for Main Street. And so I was hoping that if we look at maybe under urban renewal, uh, let's see, In the About might be a good opportunity because there are some links there as well. But there's also a link in the about linked to Gold Beach and there are several services there. And I wondered if we might consider putting a link to the Main Street website because it's pretty crazy.
Okay, yep. I, uh, I, I'm ashamed to admit that I don't, I don't go to the city's website very much because I don't need to. Um, but when people tell me what's, um, what's missing, I, the gentleman that does our website, I usually just shoot him an email and he can get it, get it up there. So I'll let, um, Kim know to, um, have a link to Main Street.
Thank you so much.
Anything further?
No, sir.
All right. Counselor Brennan, do you have a list?
I do not. I have nothing.
Counselor, we're done.
I have nothing.
Counselor Campbell.
Would you please have the web page administrator update the organizational chart? It has Doug Brand listed as assistant counselor and me in position three and.
That's actually me, um, that, because I just sent him the chart. So that, yes.
It, it all needs to be updated. It, it's not accurate as far as who's in what position. Oopsie.
Uh, anything further, ma'am? Because I have a question to ask of you.
No, sir.
Uh, do you have anything, uh, the latest news concerning any changes or what have you been done to the event center, how that, how that's doing?
We are currently on phase two of that project. We are anxiously awaiting the last spec report from VMLK, which is the company we hired out of, uh, Portland. And what they're going to do is come up with bidder packages with all the specs. They're going to help with, um, how to advertise, where to advertise and then help coordinate and facilitate. Not only with the specs, but if bidders have any questions, they can be directed to VMLK for any engineering questions. Um, that, they've estimated that that would take six weeks to complete and it's been about eight weeks. Um, but I know that the gentleman we were working with took a vacation in there. So I'm trying to be patient, but I was getting ready to push on Jody so she could push on to him to get it.
Well, I'll tell you what, I want to thank you once again for being our eyes and ears there. I truly do appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Kaufman?
It's actually pretty amazing because they wanted to get it done by last September. I think we're lucky to get it done by this one as well.
I'm, I'm afraid that by the time we get the specs, that all the large companies are already going to have bids and work projected through the rainy season. And it's not getting it done until next spring. And that's unfortunate because everyone had hoped that we wouldn't have to do the bucket brigade again this winter.
And once again, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your efforts. I truly do. Counselor Kaufman, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
The housing task force is got pretty interesting. I've been talking to Georgia and Ellen about the land trust concept, which was a new idea to me. There, I don't think the closest one here is Portland, is it? Crown Town? And it's basically, sorry.
Sounds like they were putting it on the back burner for a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it, it's kind of an interesting concept. A two and three could do it together because it doesn't have to be one parcel of property. It could be like 10 parcels of property, um, all along to the trust. And they have a deed restriction where you buy your house, but it doesn't include the land. When you sell it, you can only make so much profit. So the next person makes just as good a deal as you did, except for a little bit of inflation. And they ask special financing. So, um, it really sounded, like thinking outside the box, somebody's finally doing that. And I think if we did it together with Cus County, we could probably find big enough pieces of property to make it happen. I don't think Curry could do it by itself.
Yeah.
Too small. Because they'd need 100 units to make it pencil.
I don't think that's pretty nice.
Um, anyway, I thought that was really, really interesting. I wish I had more time to work on it, but, um, I don't. I am going to make the 17th because I have another calendar. And, uh, that's about as exciting as life gets, I think.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Um, real quickly, I have an OMA, uh, conference, uh, the first of August. So I'll be gone for a few days, uh, at the beginning of August. And it is in, uh, Medford this year. Yeah.
Nice to hear.
A lot of sunscreen. Um, but at any rate, other than that, um, I do want to thank Council at a good meeting. Ariel, that was once again, that was a, a very nice, uh, presentation. You did a great job on that. And I want to thank our sergeant back there, bless the tar. He's been making sure that we're all safe. And, uh, and I want to thank you all for attending. It's, it's good to see your faces out there. Um, so with that in mind, the next regular scheduled city council meeting, oh, wait a second. Before I jump to that, uh, does anybody here wish to say anything before we close? This is not for you, it's for citizens to make a comment if you'd like to. We made this specially available for you. So if you do, then here's your big chance because you have only three minutes. Nobody want to take me up on that? Okay. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is Monday, August 12th, 2019 at 6:30. It'll be right here. And so with that in mind, I will, uh, look at how the motion to dismiss.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
All right. That was quick. Of course, I always count on, uh, Counselor Brennan to make those seconds really, really quick. So would you get ready? I'm not even going to bother with the discussion question.
Aye.
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 All right. Meeting adjourned and, uh, thank you. Thank you all very much.